Hey, hey.
I don't know if we can or can't stop at our temp tonight.
I don't know, but, but after the selection of the new president, we've got a plaque for Eric.
Before you start, that car is parked in the Enterprise parking lot and we're going to tow it.
Good evening, I've got a, I've got a quick announcement for someone who is driving a silver Kia Optima. The license number is ZOD470. You're parked in the Enterprise parking lot across the street and they are getting ready to tow that vehicle.
Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the first regular meeting of 2019. At this time, I'd like you to please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States. Mr. Hidalgo, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one motion, unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Members of the board and to the public, congratulations, we'll go out this week to Early College Academy. Late yesterday afternoon, I was notified by the Louisiana Department of Education that the Early College Academy was selected as one of six schools in Louisiana that is being nominated as a national blue ribbon school for their high academic performance. Thank you. We are incredibly excited and proud of their success and opportunity to have them represent our state at the national level. This past weekend, the Como High School Speech and Debate Team competed in the 37th Annual STM Speech and Debate Tournament. Thirty-one schools from across Louisiana and Mississippi competed in this prestigious event. The Como Speech and Debate Team placed first in team sweepstakes by a 600-point margin and collected the most trophies, 43, by a high school at a single tournament in Louisiana. Additionally, select members of the team were invited to James Logan Martin Luther King Junior Invitational Tournament to be held in Union City, California this weekend. Based on the talent and charisma of the students and sponsor, the entire cost of this opportunity, including round trip airfare, rooms, meals, and incidentals, is being covered by the event organizers. We wish this Speech and Debate Team the best of luck for those of, those that are traveling to California and congratulate them for their outstanding success. Last week, I had the opportunity to visit our schools and recognize the district's teachers and principals of the year. Congratulations goes out to Lauren Duhon from Elementary, Elementary School Teacher of the Year from LEO Judy's; Casey Edgar Jackson, Middle School Teacher of the Year from Thibodeaux STEM; Alexander Thomas, High School Teacher of the Year from Northside High School; Cherie Fontenot, Elementary School Principal of the Year from JW FAWK; and John Mouton, who is in the audience tonight. He is the Middle School Principal of the Year from Broussard Middle; and Jeff DeBatez, the High School Principal of the Year from Thibodeaux STEM. Congratulations to those individuals. Lafayette Reads Together celebrates its fifth anniversary with Finding Gobi by Dion Leonard. Board members, you have a copy of the book. This year's selected book is Finding Gobi by Mr. Leonard. Ultra marathon runner and author Dion Leonard competed in the Gobi March, a grueling 250-kilometer race through China's Gobi Desert. On the second stage of the marathon, he noticed a stray dog following him. Lafayette Reads Together celebrates its fifth anniversary in a big way with the heartwarming tale about a little lost dog and the seasoned runner who saved her. The Public Library here in Lafayette is handing out 1,000 free copies of the book. Lafayette Parish has also purchased class kits for middle and high schools with grant funds. The ELA department has created six, several sixth grade lessons integrating the book into the curriculum. Teachers are able to apply for an art grant related to the book. The art grants are available through LPSS and ACA. Padgett Guidry and her team created those. As you may have seen on the TV spots, some students in Chinese immersion are going to perform a couple of songs at the author event on the eve of Tuesday, January 29th at the main library. The author of Finding Gobi will also be visiting Judy's Middle School and Edgar Martin's Middle School coordinated with the help of the school librarians. Teachers, students, and staff across the district will be participating. Join us for the evening event, An Evening with Author Dion Leonard, on Tuesday, January 29th at the main library from 6:15 to 7:30 PM. He will talk about his journey in Finding Gobi while running an ultra marathon in the Gobi Desert. Along the way, he discovered many things about himself and China and there will be a book signing opportunity there. And, we have a special guest with us here tonight. Taking part in one of the Finding Gobi book discussions, Christine Dewey, LPSS Director of Early Childhood, and her therapy dog Willow, who is in the audience tonight, will be a guest on the discussion panel. The book discussions will take place Monday, February 11th at the main library and Monday, February 18th at the South Regional Library. So I hope you, everybody gets excited about this ultra marathon runner coming to Lafayette, spending time with our students, and we learn to read together in Lafayette Parish. You have a number of slides that are being shown to you, board members. As you drive about the Lafayette Parish, you will begin to see the pavilions that are under construction at our elementary schools. There's a couple of slides there, two of them that show the pavilion under construction at Middlebrook Elementary School. There's a slide showing the pavilion under construction at GT Linden. They are going up. There's a schedule of when these pavilions are going to be erected. I added this to my, as an attachment to my superintendent's comments. There are roughly about 15 of these pavilions set for, for delivery and construction over the next couple of weeks. There's a couple of slides there that also show the parent drop-off lane at Boucher Elementary School. It is nearing completion and should be open within the next three weeks or so. And I've got one update for the board in terms of the government shutdown in Washington. And one of the things we're concerned about is the child nutrition program. We received word today that the USDA has guaranteed funding through the month of March, is what they can guarantee to school districts at this point. And that concludes my remarks, and so without further ado, I'm going to open the floor for nominations for board president. Mr. Lotchelay?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Justin Centani for president.
I'll second. Thank you, any other nominations? Mr. Angell?
I'd like to nominate Jeremy Hidalgo for president.
And I'll second.
Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mr. Angell, Ms. Morris, I appreciate the confidence that y'all have placed in me. I thank y'all very much for the nomination, however, and I have thoroughly enjoyed serving as vice president this last year. However, if it's okay, I'd like to respectfully decline the nomination. I do thank y'all for, for the nomination.
Any other nominations? Then I'd like to recommend a vote by, Mr. Kinesik?
I move to close nominations and elect Mr. Centani by acclamation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Centani.
I'd like to thank my fellow board members, thank you Dr. Aguilar, it's a great honor. The next item up will be the election of the Vice President of the Lafayette Parish School Board for 2019. I'll open the floor for any nominations.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Britt Lotchelay for vice president.
Second.
We have a nomination for Britt Lotchelay in a second. Do we have any other nominations? Do we have a motion to?
Yes, you do, a motion to close the nominations and accept the election by acclamation.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept Mr. Lotchelay as the Lafayette Parish School Board Vice President for 2019 by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, congratulations, Mr. Lotchelay.
Congratulations. You're not having much here. Mr. Centani?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to
Absolutely.
Call up Mr. Kinesik to the center of the boardroom and award him with a plaque thanking him for his year of service to the Lafayette Parish School Board.
Congratulations, Mr. Kinesik.
Thank you.
Next up will be our information items for the evening. The first item up is the annual LSU Ag Center Report given by Mr. Charles Abear.
There we go, good afternoon. I'm Charles Abear, 4H agent, county agent with the LSU Ag Center, here to give our annual report of the Lafayette, LSU Ag Center, and Southern University Ag Center programs. As many of you know, we are part of the three-way system between the federal government, USDA, state government, the land-grant university systems, which are two, both Southern and LSU, and local government, part of our funding coming from Lafayette Consolidated Government as well as the Lafayette Parish School System. We have campuses in all 64 parishes in the state. Every parish has an office as well as research stations. And our local office, in case you are not aware, is located at 1010 Lafayette Street, located in the parish government building downtown Lafayette. You should have a couple of items at your desk, at your seat. A couple of those items include a parish-written report, front and back, of all of the programs, along with our staff, and there are a few of our staff members with me this evening, and I'll just introduce those with our FCS, FCS staff, Family and Consumer Science, Ms. Angell Jordan, Ms. Tiffany Williams, Ms. Jerika Boulay, and Ms. Bobby Mitchell. I realize that I want to also invite you to join us at the livestock show. Parish show is going on starting this evening, tomorrow, and Saturday. And the district show, where we have nine parishes that'll come into Lafayette, will be next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and Saturday at Blackham. But our basic program areas consist of agriculture and horticulture, family and consumer science, and 4H youth development. These are many of the programs that our Ag and Natural Resources staff. If you have problems with your soil, with your trees, and your yard, feel free to contact our office. There are many different level master programs that you can gain knowledge within those program areas that are available within our parish. We do have a Master Gardener program that many of them are involved through school gardens as part of our program. They're an outreach for our program in the community, giving many hours, over 9,000 hours a year, to the community of Lafayette. Family and Consumer Science staff, they do programs in the area of youth, adult, and health fairs in the community. These are a few of the different programs that are available. 4H youth development, we are in 56 schools, both public, private, and parochial, reaching about 1,600 youth just in the school system per year. And then school enrichment, there are a little over 6,000 members that we work with throughout Lafayette Parish through Care2Development, school gardens, or the Wetlands Program. And then there are many volunteer opportunities for parents and grandparents that are still involved in our program that do give back through guiding our young people to life skill development. Many of you have been on school cook-off teams as elected officials. I gave, each of you have a poster for this at your seat. You can put up in your place of business, school board office, your office, to promote the event which will take place on Saturday, February 16th. We have the winning picture from Alice Boucher from last year's cook-off. I'm sure y'all have recognized at least one school board member in this picture. Y'all can get his autograph later, and we have at least a child of another member in that picture. So I want to congratulate them for their outstanding work last year. And the cook-off will begin and be held on February 16th at David Thibodeaux STEM Magnet Academy for the fifth annual, so I would invite all of y'all to come. You, your families, even those of you in the audience. If you can either come to the livestock show this week or if you want to come to the cook-off in February, you're, you're welcome to join us. And just a couple of, I guess, recognition. Ms. Paula Guidry, one of our school garden teachers, was named Ag in the Classroom Teacher of the Year this past year for Farm Bureau, and she was awarded a trip to New Orleans and, as well as a national trip. And then both Mr. Dan Davenport, our Horticulture Agent, as well as Ms. Celeste Finney, Child Nutrition Coordinator that works along and teaches lessons with the school garden. They were both recognized as Farm to School Conference Champions of Change for 2018. So I want to thank child nutrition for our partnership, working with schools and teaching nutrition to our young people within the school system and the school gardens program. And just want to end with our mission, really to help people gain knowledge and skills and to become better citizens of their community. So we give research-based information regardless if it's youth, Ag and Natural Resource, or Family and Consumer Science to the citizens of Lafayette Parish. And I want to thank y'all as administration and school board for your continued support of our Ag Center programs, both LSU and Southern Ag Center in the parish. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Abear. Next on the agenda, 2.2, the list of bids approved to be advertised by the superintendent. Dr. Aguilar, is there anything needing to be pointed out?
So I do want to point out that we have two bids that have been let out, and they're significant. Bid 51-19 is the wing addition to Woodvale Elementary School, as well as bid 52-19, the Acadian Middle and Evangeline Middle. Bids are out for the construction of their wings as well, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the 2019-2020 Budget Recap and Timeline, Mr. Guidry?
Yes, we're just presenting the calendar to the board again as we approach our, our budget process. Budget season is upon us, so we ask that everyone take a look at it and basically work it, work it into their calendar. Of course, with the new president, we'll, we'll visit it, we'll take a, a look at it, see if there are any, is there any tweaking that needs to be done. If, if there are any changes, we will make you aware of it shortly thereafter.
Board members, I would add on to what Mr. Guidry said. We are going to most likely move the April 9th meeting to the following day for our regular board meeting. And then the public adoption of the budget from May 1st to May 8th for our regular board meeting in May. So keep that in mind, and I will be sending a list of meeting dates for the So keep that in mind, and I will be sending a list of meeting dates for the remainder of the year to you guys for any feedback and changes that you might need. Next up, 2.4, Human Resources Personnel Changes for January 17th, 2019. Ms. Thibodeau?
Before I get started, I want to congratulate you, Board President and Board Vice President. We look forward to working with you this year. First, I need to introduce the new Assistant Principal, Mr. Ryan Martin at Milton Elementary Middle School. Mr. Martin obtained a Bachelor of Science degree and a Master of Education degree from UL Lafayette. Mr. Martin served in the United States Marine Corps as a Manpower Non-Commissioned Officer. He has served in many capacities with the Lafayette Parish School System. He has served as a teacher at NP Moss Middle School and Scott Middle School. He has served as an Assistant Principal at the WD in Mary Baker Smith Career Center and as the Social Studies Academic Specialist for the District. His most recent position was Dean of Students at Lafayette Middle School. Congratulations, Mr. Martin. We're proud, we're proud of you.
Thank you, Ms. Thibodeau. Board President, Mr. Centany, congratulations on your position tonight. Mr. Kinesik, congratulations on your last year of serving, as well as Mr. Lachale, your promotion tonight, sir. Dr. Aguilar, I'd like to thank you for this promotion, moving from Lafayette Middle to Milton. It's a different change of pace for me and the many schools that I've worked in in the district in the past with, working with at-risk students, I think has prepared me to work in these higher-paced schools with Milton having their A-rating and working more with the teachers in the classroom on curriculum-based strategies and things that we can do to move the needle and make Milton a better school than it already is, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, sir.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal at Como High School, Mr. Matt Schumaker. Mr. Schumaker obtained a Bachelor of Music Education degree from the University of Georgia, a Master of Music Performance degree from UL Lafayette, and a Master of Educational Leadership degree from UL Lafayette. Mr. Schumaker has served as the Music Director at the Episcopal School of Acadiana Lower School, the Band Director and Fine Arts Department Head at NP Moss Middle School, and is currently the Band Director, Technology Coordinator, and Co-Academy Director at David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy. Mr. Schumaker was awarded the Lafayette Education Foundation School Impact Grant towards formation of a drum line at NP Moss Middle School. He also was awarded the title of World Champion at the Drum Corps International Individual Ensemble Competition at Carolina Crown Symbol Ensemble. Congratulations to you, Mr. Schumaker.
Thank you, Ms. Thibodeau. Thank you to the board members and Dr. Aguilar for having this confidence in me to put me in this position. I'm really eager to get started and, you know, ready to make a positive impact in the lives of the students at Como High School. When I moved here in 2003, I really thought I was going to be here for about two years of grad school, and then I would head back to Georgia, and when I got done, I realized I was home. I wasn't going anywhere. So I love this place and thank you again.
Congratulations, Mr. Schumaker, Mr. Martin. Ms. Thibodeau, do you have any other introductions?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before we get started, I'd like to request that we remove item 3.15 from tonight's agenda. It's an item related to intergovernmental agreement that needs more attention before we can vote on it.
Does anyone have any objection to removing that item from the agenda? All right, so 3.15 has been removed. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I will now read through our action agenda for the evening. Any board member, I'm going to explain this for the audience since we have a full house tonight. Any board member who wishes to pull an item for further discussion will say, "Pull this item," and that means we will then discuss and vote on that item separately. If you hear an item that you're interested in speaking on and it does not get pulled, then there will be one motion where we approve a batch of items at the end of my reading of this list. That will be your time to give your public comment and give your thoughts on what we're about to vote on. And I'll, again, make this announcement when it's time. That said, 3.1, Naming of New Administrative Office.
Pull that, please.
3.2, Approval of the 2019-2020 School Calendar.
Pull that one, please.
3.3, Grade Configurations for Bruce Art Middle and Youngsville Middle Schools. 3.4, Elementary School Rezone. 3.5, Middle School Rezone. 3.6, Approval of Resolution 01-19-1948 Declaring January 2019 School Board Member Recognition Month. 3.7, Retirement and Resignation of the Superintendent. I'd like to pull that one. 3.8, Budget Revision to Capital Projects Fund and General Fund One-Time Transfer to General Fund. 3.9, Adoption of Resolution 01-19-1950 Recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Holliday. 3.10, Hiring Incentive for Hard-to-Fill Positions. 3.11, Request for Approval of Grant Submission. 3.12, Approval of Portable Buildings Relocation to Southside High School. 3.13, Approval of Construction Managers at Risk for Four Classroom Wing Addition Projects. 3.14, Budget Revision to Self-Funded Construction and Capital Improvement Fund for Projects at Thibodeau STEM. 3.15 has been removed from the agenda. 3.16, Reject All Bids Purchase and Removal of a Four-Room Quadplex Building Bid Number 3.17, Sales Tax Collection Reports for November 2018 and December 2018. 3.18, Resolution 01-19-1949 Final Approval of the Issuance of Sales Tax Revenue Bonds. 3.19, Budget-to-Actual Reports, December 2018. 3.20, 2018-2019 Second Quarter Budget Revisions for Applicable Funds. 3.21, Grant Fund Summary, December 2018. 3.22, Master Teacher Job Description Revision. 3.23, Budget Revision to Increase Instructional Appeal Slots. 3.24, Dr. Rafaela Berenko Elementary School Principal Job Description. 3.25, Elementary ELA Library Science Specialist Job Description. 3.26, Educational Classroom Interpreter Job Description Update. 3.27, Deaf Education Lead Interpreter Job Description. 3.28, Approval of Minutes. Ms. Angel.
I have a motion to approve items not pulled?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lachale, the motion by Ms. Angel. At this time, if you are here to speak on any agenda item except 3.1, 3.2, 3.7, 3.9, and 3.10, this is your opportunity to come to the podium and use your time to give us your public comment on what we're about to vote on, because we're going to vote on all of these items at once. We will then handle the five agenda items that I listed individually after this vote. Do we have any public comment? This is for the rezoning? This is for the portable buildings? Do we have any board member comment? Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Nine for, none against.
Okay, the first item up will be 3.1, Naming of New Administrative Office. Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that the board name the new administrative building located at 207 Town Center Parkway as the Dr. Nathaniel P. Moss Annex.
I'll second that. We have a motion by Mr. Hidalgo, seconded by Mr. Lachale.
Mr. President, I know it's time for public comment. I'd like to say that the reason I pulled it is because I'd like someone from the family the opportunity to come up and speak if they would like.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Please.
I feel really shart up here. Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this item. I am Mitzi Moss-Duyan, and I'm in Mr. Elroy's district. I'm also the great-great niece of Nathaniel P. Moss, and it is with great humility and gratitude that this board finds it important enough, that finds the history of my great-great uncle important enough to name a building on his behalf. For those of you that have done research, you know that Dr. Moss was extremely involved in literally the development of Lafayette on numerous levels, not just education, but education definitely was one of the greatest. He was also instrumental in farm-to-market roads, i.e. Moss Street. He was also instrumental in industry. The family were extremely involved in business, Moss Pharmacy down on Jefferson Street. And there's so many like him that I, that were involved in days gone by. In our case, we just want the history, the impact that he had, to not be forgotten. I certainly hope that if you have a family member, if, or you know people, just because they're gone or their children are gone, help their memories stay alive. So in that regard, I am humbled. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Duyan. You know, last month, I was the only one to vote against renaming the school, and I did it for a personal reason. My father-in-law grew up on the corner of Mudd and Sterling. If I say something like "The House with the Monkeys," do you know the house I'm talking about? That was my father-in-law's house growing up, and he told me many, many stories about your great-great uncle or great-uncle. Great, wow. He's a fine man. I'm glad that we have the opportunity to do this. Do we have any board member comment? Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Hidalgo, would you like to take this opportunity to make a few comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Aguilar, I failed to make some comments a second ago on an item that was on the consent agenda, and the president has given me the floor to do so. What I'd like to ask you to do, sir, please, is to do a little more research on our administrative rule and see if you can't find ways, ideas to bring back to the board that would allow additional flexibility when we're doing spot rezoning. For example, we do a high school rezone. Instead of just allowing juniors and rising juniors and seniors to stay, since we're going to be looking at rezoning every three to five years, and we're not going to wait 30 years at a time to do it, like our history has shown, I think we may have opportunities to, you know, and I'm asking you to see if we have opportunities to see if maybe, for example, if you started that school, at that high school, you can finish at that high school. See what else you might be able to look at for siblings as well. I know, just from what I know of the topic, I know that middle school, elementary schools are going to be a lot tougher to accomplish that, but I'd like for you to look at all levels of, you know, middle, elementary, and high school and see what additional flexibility we can have. Through my town hall meetings, over these, on these topics, look, it's a major concern. I know that the rezoning we did two years ago and three years ago, the spot rezone, I know that we probably would not have been able to do that because it was an immediate need, but now that we're going to address it every three to five years, I'll ask you to see if you can find additional flexibility. And thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. And members of the board, I'm happy to engage in trying to figure out if there's additional flexibility pursuant to rezoning and the administrative rule. Mr. Craig and I have had some preliminary conversations, and we're going to try to put down on paper some ideas. We'd like to bring that back to you either at the February or March meeting.
Thank you both. Next item is 3.2, Approval of the 2019-2020 School Calendar. Ms. Lachale?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Proposed Calendar 5A.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Proposed Calendar 5A by Ms. Lachale, a second by Ms. Morrison. It's my first time, I'm going to mess that up at least four or five more times, okay? Do we have any public comment on the motion to approve Proposed Calendar 5A? Do we have any board member comment? Madam Secretary, I will call. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Chasso, I overlooked you.
Really quickly, maybe somebody from staff, if y'all could just point out to us the tremendous differences between the various three options we have remaining, like I know start date is 15th through to 19th, 15th or 19th, I just want to be sure.
The big, there is a significant difference between 5A and 5B. The big difference is 5A, you start on a Thursday, Friday, the kids attend Thursday, Friday's the day for everybody to regroup, get their supplies-
Correct.
-final planning. You gain a day of instruction before state testing. There was some interest in having us start no sooner than August 19th, which was why we developed 5B, but otherwise, you're really talking one day. They're about the same.
Thank you, sir.
Any other board member comment? Ms. Angel?
I just have a comment, Mr. President. It is my understanding that this is not the calendar that offered the most instructional hours, minutes prior to the testing, and that's why I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you, sir. Any other board member comment? Madam Secretary, I will call for the vote.
Seven for, two against.
The next item is 3.7, Retirement of the Superintendent.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the board accept the resignation of Superintendent Dr. Aguilar effective midnight, May 17th, 2019.
I have a motion to accept the resignation of Superintendent Aguilar effective at midnight, May 17th, 2019, by Mr. Kinesik, seconded by Ms. Morris. Do we have any public comment on this item? Do we have any board member comment? Yes, sir, Ms. Angel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe there's some English teachers in here that could help me. I don't agree with the item as it's stated, that Dr. Aguilar is resigning, the resignation of Dr. Aguilar. In my mind, he's not resigning. He was hired for the four years ago in May for a four-year term, and his term will be up. That's just my thought.
Mr. President? Thank you, Ms. Angel, Mr. Hidalgo.
Thank you. You, Ms. Angel, you stole my thoughts. In fact, I'd like to, I'm sorry to be so technical here, but I'd like to make an amendment to that motion, that the board accept the retirement of Dr. Aguilar.
I'll second that.
Substitute motion, Mr. Hidalgo? Substitute motion by Mr. Hidalgo, seconded by Ms. Lachale, that the board accept the retirement of Dr. Aguilar effective at midnight, May 17th, 2019. Is that fine? Do we have any public comment on the substitute motion? Do we have any board member comment on the substitute motion? I'll take a moment. I had this brief discussion with Dr. Aguilar just the other day. I want to make sure everyone knows exactly what this man has contributed to education in Lafayette Parish. He has been a, he was a classroom teacher, a science teacher at Acadiana High School before I was born, and I'm not young. Forty-three years ago, in 1975, he was a science teacher at Acadiana High. Forty-three years ago, in 1975, he was a science teacher at Acadiana High. Fortunately, as he, as he said on TV the other day and told me personally, he, he made it through that, that very difficult first year and decided to come back and, and really put his nose to the grindstone. He then went on to become an assistant principal at Acadiana High for nine years. He went to Karen Crowe High School and was the principal for four years. He spent two years, two of the best years of his life in data processing here at the central office, and I say that very sarcastically. And then in 2004, I believe, he was hired as superintendent of St. Mary Parish for 11 years where he brought that school system up from, if I remember from your interview, I know you finished 17th, were you 47th when you took over? Forty-fourth out of 66 school districts in this state to 17th. And then four years ago, when Lafayette Parish desperately needed a calming influence, calming influence of a real leader, Dr. Aguilar applied for this job and we hired him on a four-year contract on May 17, 2019. So with my heartfelt thanks for the work you've done for us and for the children, for my children personally, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Mr. Lachey. Or Mr. Hidalgo. Y'all want to follow that?
I'll follow it easily. Dr. Aguilar, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak for long. You already know how I feel about you. I want to thank you for your service to this district. I've got a lot of respect for you and until midnight on May the 17th, I plan to maximize our relationship, you know, to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Who's next? Ms., Dr. Chassault.
I was actually going to wait because him and I were speaking today in his office. I was actually going to wait on this. I wanted to say this at the last meeting, but it seems like we're giving this gentleman his kudos. Again, he started teaching before I was born. I don't know if that's good or bad, Doc, but Doc shared something with me in his office today and I asked him at least three or four times if I could share this with everyone. And the first time I said, "Doc, I gotta, I gotta tell everybody about this." He's like, "Oh, no, no, no." And he just, he shared it with me in kind and just, Doc, how many, how many days do you have total?
Dr. Chassault's talking about how many sick leave days I've accumulated over 43 and a half years. So today I have 328 sick leave days accumulated.
So everyone grasped that concept of 328. So I laughed and I joked with Doc. I said, "Doc, you realize that you could literally take off hypothetically Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and come to work on Friday, even a half day on Friday if you wanted to?" And we were, we were joking and, and Doc said, "Yeah, but what I'm going to do with those days, because feasibly it just wouldn't, wouldn't work out properly, is that I'm going to take those days and donate those days." Like everybody grasped the concept of that. He could take off and go home and rest if he wanted to and he's going to take those days and donate them to anyone that technically needs more sick days. And I mean, if that isn't the nicest gesture possible. And from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate that because he truly, I had to ask him like three or four times. I wasn't even going to mention it tonight. He's like, "No, no worry about it." It's like, "Doc, the people need to know about that." "No, no, no." It's like, "Doc, I really want people to know about that." So thank you so much, Doc.
Thank you, Dr. Chassault. Ms. Morrison?
I just want to say it was such a pleasure to work with you, Dr. Aguilar. You know, being a new school, school board member and having someone like you to start off this venture was just, just a pleasure. I liked whenever we called, you always had an answer or you would get back with me. It was so easy just to call you and talk to you about whatever and I really appreciate that and I think we all do. So we were really blessed and fortunate to have this opportunity to work with you with such, a lot of experience knowing the kids and 43 years in education. That's, we were really blessed to have you on, on our team and we're going to miss you. I was kind of shocked, you know, to hear that. That wasn't a good day for me, but I know you're going to enjoy your retirement with Ms. Karen. Thanks for all the goodies for Christmas. If y'all want to still continue to bake us cookies and popcorn balls, we happily accept. But we love you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Broussard.
Doc, I'm not going to rehash what everyone said. It certainly has been a pleasure working with you. You certainly made my job easier. I'm not going to say like Mr. Santani and, and Mr. Dr. Chassault that, that.
Well, he was definitely a teacher after you were born, right?
You know, but, 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 but I'm going to say you taught my kids in school at Acadiana High and I'm fortunate to be at the age I am. Aren't we fortunate to be at the age we are now? But, but it certainly has been a pleasure working with you. You made my job much easier. You answered all the questions. You made, you made the, you made the system accessible and you are, you were accessible as well. You, you never ran away from a challenge, anything that came up, whether it's good or bad, you stood the ground and you made a decision and that's what leaders do. They make decisions and we move on. So I appreciate your years here and I appreciate you, the, the working relationship that we've had through ideas and it's always difficult to, you know, I told someone, you begin work with the goals of retiring and when it's time to retire, then you start to wonder, should I do this a year, two years, a day, a month? Then you make a decision and you go with it. I want to tell you retirement is good. So when it finally kicks in, you're going to enjoy it. So best of luck.
Thank you. Mr. Kinesik.
Dr. Aguilar, I'd just like to say, I said this to you quickly in an email, it's truly been an honor to serve with you. Through my life of service and, you know, for the country and then on the school board, it's been phenomenal. You know, when you serve with people, you don't always want someone who's going to agree with you all the time and you need somebody who's going to set you straight sometimes and, and have healthy debate and, you know, you've done amazing things with, as Mr. Santani said, you were, you were a calming effect on the school system. I can't speak enough about the accolades and, and, you know, things like, you know, $250 million in construction under your watch and, and again, it's truly been an honor and I appreciate all the, all the guidance you've given the board and leadership you've given the school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinesik. Ms. Angel?
First of all, Mr. President, you are young. And second of all, I totally agree with you, Mr. Broussard, about retiring. And I just want to say, of course, thank you, Doc. Dr. Aguilar was principal when my kids were in school at Karen Crowe. And I have more coming, but I'm doing some research. I'll be back. Thank you.
Mr. Lachey.
I was kept for last. You said 43 years in the school system?
Forty-three and a half.
Ladies and gentlemen, he, I was in his very first hour of first class biology at Acadiana. So our relationship goes back his whole time in the school system and we served in the press box together at Acadiana. I was a spotter and he was the voice of the Rams. And I think, you know, Doc, when I look at you and say, "Thank you," that's only two words, but you know what "thank you" means. I was always told in life that, you know, the dots connect. And 43 years, 43 years later, I want to let y'all know, my teacher is still teaching me today and it's, it's been a pleasure and I'm honored to be able to call you a friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for, for, for the kind words. I truly am the one who's been blessed because I had a chance to get back into Lafayette Parish. You gave me that chance to come back home and really to see if I could do something for the community of Lafayette. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. Next item is 3.9 Adoption of Resolution 01-19-1950 Recognizing. Oh, we do need to vote on that. I'm sorry. Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Nine four, none against.
Next item is 3.9 Adoption of Resolution 01-19-1950 Recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. Mr. Broussard.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution. I'd like to read in honor Dr. Martin Luther King's holiday.
Can I get a motion first, please?
I move that we adopt the resolution 01-1950 Recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Kinesik, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Do we have any public comment on the motion to adopt this resolution? Mr. Broussard, please.
To recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday and to celebrate his contribution to our nation. Whereas contributions of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. have had a significant impact on the civil rights movement of the United States and whereas all people of all creeds, colors, ethnic background, and socioeconomic levels can benefit from the principle that Dr. King preached. And whereas in this time of increasing violence, Dr. King emphasizes on nonviolence and calls for peace or even more prominent, prominent, and whereas in this time when many are again attempting to focus on ethnicity and race and primary considerations, the message of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. that people should not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the context of their character, can and should provide enlightened guidance. And whereas in this time when so many seem determined to tear apart the fabric of our society, Dr. King's plea for all Americans to transcend the things which separate and divide us so that we might reach the spiritual plateau where we can celebrate our common humanity assumes an even greater urgency. And whereas in this time when so many choose to criticize and belittle this country, Dr. King's reference to America and the magnificent words of the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence as positive ideas evolved to be embraced and good ideas enthusiastically to be pursued can and should provide refreshing insight into the wonder and glory of our nation. And whereas students and the general public will be able to participate in a variety of activities sponsored by the Lafayette Martin Luther King Holiday Committee. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Lafayette Parish School Board does hereby support January 21st, 2019, the National Holiday Honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and directs our administrators and teachers to remember the famous American through appropriate classroom and school activities focused upon the dream of unity and brotherhood of all Americans. And that was signed by the Secretary of Treasury of the Lafayette Parish School Board, Dr. Donald Aguilar.
Thank you, Mr. Broussard. Do we have any further board member comment? Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Nine four, none against.
The final item on the agenda for tonight is 3.10 Hiring Incentive for Hard-to-Fill Positions. Mr. Broussard.
Mr. President, if I can get someone to approve it for discussion purposes.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we, the board, approve the Hiring Incentive for Hard-to-Fill Positions.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the Hiring Incentive for Hard-to-Fill Positions by Mr. Kinesik, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Do we have any public comment on this item? Do we have any board member comment?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Broussard.
I pull this item because of the, the challenges that we are facing in some of our schools, having problems filling certain slots in our educational system. The slots that are, since this conversation with administrators, some of them have been filled, but we are having problems filling slots such as math, science, social studies, and, and physics. Those are crucial to our high school students especially. And I would like administrators to, to go back, someone administrator to go back and sort of critique this because we've got some challenges with the way it is written. We can entertain lots of arguments about the way it's written. So I'm asking that, that we go back and critique this and find a, a, a more inclusive wording and a better way of putting it, putting it there so we can perhaps reward those, if it's possible, to, to be more inviting to some of our schools and take the opportunity to teach and to teach all children because they all need to be educated. Some of them, some of the schools we have are challenging, but when we latched on to this career of educating or parenting, nothing is easy. So I'm asking that, you know, the administration go back and take a look at this and bring it back to us for voting purposes when we have perfected this.
Thank you, Mr. Broussard. Mr. Kinesik, Mr. Broussard is requesting that the administration come back with suggestions along these lines rather than approve this item. Would you like to modify your, your motion as such?
Mr. President, if I may make a couple of comments as well, it might affect what Mr. Kinesik does.
Certainly, Ms. Morris.
My appreciation of this issue as well is that there may be some confusion about whether or not a school system can have an incentive plan type issue with hard-to-fill positions or not. I don't know a lot about this. I understand some districts do do it and some don't. So I think when staff is going back to take a look at the policy and, fixing those items that Mr. Broussard commented on, that they should also do a little bit of research within the state to first find out if these type of plans are proper in a school district and then looking at those perhaps as a blueprint for a plan that might work within our system.
Ms. Morris, thank you, Ms. Morris.
Just, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, there seems there's, Mr. Kinesik withdraws his motion, so we do not have a motion forward. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Hearing no motion on the current item, then we will move on. The item dies and the meeting is adjourned. Before we leave, however, I would like to point out that the next meeting will be on Wednesday, February 13th at 5:30 PM right here in the boardroom. Good evening.